And they would probably be more supportive of signing something, I guess, but that's, I guess you guys have to decide whether you want us, you know, meet again or, it doesn't have to be decided tonight, but I mean, if we want to do something before the end of the month, it would almost, you know, probably make sense to at least get some consensus of either setting meeting or telling me that, okay, we're open to meeting if they come back and ask for it or whatever.
They have asked for it in this letter.
Can, can we step back and say, well, yes, we officially say that the five-year phase in on the old plan is acceptable to us and we are also amenable to looking at this plan and at some point phasing that in?
At least discussion.
At least get them, at least let them know that we are going to-
By any kinds, might accept for asked to meet with them.
I would say at this point, um, that's probably what would, if, if you want to go that direction, that's what would probably need to happen at this point, I think would be another meeting.
Yes, and I'm not sure that anything would come out of it because we've been meeting with them year after year with the same discussion year after year. This time at least they've come up with a formula.
Yeah, and see, the big, one of the, the big problems or the big areas that I'm concerned about is the new build, if a new building does come to fruition, they've basically said that they don't want to pay for it. They want the fees not to reflect that and that's where I think this becomes very difficult.
It's hard trying to provide the service they can opt out.
That's what they've, and I guess that's one thing you could talk about at a meeting and if it comes to that, okay, you agree to disagree and don't do anything, then at least you've listened to them again and, but I don't know what else.
I doubt very much in the next two weeks they're going to find service coverage from someone else. I doubt very much they'd be able to pull it in together in that time.
And can we not serve them even though they haven't signed the contract? Are we somehow liable? Yeah. Can you say anything on that?
Yeah, um, you know, from the standpoint, the 11th hour kind of letter and, and, you know, I, if that's what they did, that's what they did, that does create some problems because they're, you know, I'll, I'll talk with Mark, we'll talk with the chief, we'll be able to decide where it goes and let you folks know if there's a meeting coming up. Reality is, right now, this is the service district, this is what you're covering. I think it's very hard to pull back even without a contract. And I, you know, I, I, I think from that standpoint, that's problematic. Now, i- if they know that, the reality is, you're really providing the service and they do owe you for it. As in any other contract, if it continues on, you really are under the same terms of the contract, that's what's there. If they're refusing to sign, you know, that's certainly an argument the city can invoke at that point. But, yeah, we'll look into it further. The, the timing is just not-
Yeah, so at what point can we say, okay, because, you know, for the last three years you've owed us this money and you haven't been paying, because if they're getting service without having to pay for it, why, why rush into pay for it? And which case, at what point can we say, okay, we provided this service for the last three years without you paying, we're no longer going to do it? I mean, you have to-
Well, that means we have to-
Don't, don't ask in a turn, it is a very, very deep loss.
Let us look at it a little bit, we'll figure that out, because the reality is, yeah, the districts change, what's served, what's not served can change, so, um, but it's not going to change in the next two weeks.
No, yeah, I don't think we need to set a meeting time or even agree to a meeting at right now, tonight, but I certainly would direct you two, excuse me, to look into this further. I would like to, you could email me a copy of that, um, proposed contract they've come up with, their model contract or whatever.
Well, it's in the-
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's in here.
Oh, it's in there, yes, I was looking at it. Okay.
I was kind of looking at it, you know, like you say, three years, you know, back and forth in this year and letting the barn door open. I feel that if we should consider, from what they said there in December, members, that they would accept the contract for this year, get that underneath our belts, go into it with a clean sheet of paper, bring their, their objection, then bring ours in, sit down and we've got, set up some certain dates and then go forward with it from there. And I know, I believe there's something going on in Rochester too, somewhere they're talking about looking-
Township Association.
Yeah, it's a little bit more, it might give them a little bit different idea and it may be something that we can work off too. I look at it this way, work with both sides and see once what we can come up with, because we're going to have this thing every single year.
And we have.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think we should come out and it seems to be getting, from what I'm gathering out of it, muddier every time. And I think, I think by just wiping it, if they'll accept the payment this year, go forward. And I, if, I love it.
Isn't that what we kind of do every year? They accept the payment and we go over again?
We're doing exactly what we did in December, tonight. We're not getting anything else done. And that's exactly what happened in December, don't get nothing done.
Year after year.
Year after year, so, let's move on.
At least we have the money in the pocket and go forward.
Well, the only thing I'd like to add to this is the fact that we represent the city, we charge them the service, we have to do our best for the city canyon and not worry so much about saving the township's money. They don't like it, it's like buying insurance, they can't go, say, hey, I'm going to pay you 200 dollars this month. So, I don't want to add to it.
So, what do we need, a motion on this?
We don't need anything, not taking any action.
So, in fact, we're ignoring your letter.
Well, I would be hoping to have amendment.
Come back and date full council meeting and formally request or talk about it. But at this point, I don't know what action you would take anyway.
Okay, let's move on to IUC, our meeting of the representatives of the mayor clinic, Neil Hall, this one is-
I hope I spelled his, spelled his name right there. No, I just kind of tried to read his little name tag there, but I figured it's close enough. Um, we met with two representatives today from Mayo Clinic Oatana, Dr. Brian Balkers, I believe his name is, who's the director, medical director of the clinic there, and then Mark Brown, who is some administrative manager, I don't know his exact title, it just says administration, I think that's hard. Basically, and we conveyed to him some big concerns that the city and I think the whole area has for, um, some changes that have been made at the kidney clinic. Its operating hours have gone from five days to two days a week and we wanted to convey to them that we are really concerned about that and we're concerned that the cutback in hours may further reduce the patient counts and may lead to further cutbacks or closure. Um, and I put together some talking points or some things that came out of our meeting today and I think it was a good, we had a good discussion with them. Um, one of the things they brought up to us is that they have a difficult time recruiting nurses, nurse practitioners and doctors, the more skilled the position, the harder it is to recruit in rural areas. And this also even goes primarily to the doctors and the specialists to Fairbowl and Oatana and places like that now. But for us, we're talking doctor to a limited extent, but, you know, nurse practitioner type of positions. And they said that's, it's difficult for them to find people who want to just work in the small town and what they found is that what they'll do is they'll have, like right now, there's two people at Surf Canyon who both work at the Oatana clinic and so that way they'll work four days a week at Oatana and one day here. And so, and he said both of those individuals like that because they have a little change every week, but they're still mainly at the larger facility. And so, he kind of said that's kind of the way of the future, doing more of a pool. But they also told us the patient load there has dropped from an average of what I thought he said was 15 patients a week approximately to about nine patients a day and he said they need 16 to 20 patients a day to break even. Um, the, another long-term and not a new thing, but another problem they've had is that, um, some health plans have males of tier two, which means it's not a preferred carrier and so it's difficult for patients to go there. Um, it's not, they can't have it be their primary provider. I don't think that's a new thing. Um, like I said, there's currently two CMPs, nurse practitioners and staff. Um, Mayo is looking at, system-wide, at telemedicine options for what they call rural clinics, cover times with regional staff. They talked about this thing that they're, um, looking into or experimenting with or whatever, beta testing that is a, like, I guess, is a form of telemedicine, but what it is, is an automated, um, station where people could go and get, it'll take their temperature, their pulse, do other rudimentary things like that and then it's video connected to the bigger clinic. And so, if it's a, you know, obviously not a, you know, real serious situation, people could go in there and they could meet with a nurse practitioner or even ultimately a doctor without leaving the canyon. And that would be as a backfill, so the days that they didn't have somebody here, that would still be available. Um, and I think there's a lot of potential probably with that. Um, we emphasized our concern with the reduction of hours, we talked about different things that we're concerned about impacts on the community. Um, the Mayo staff, um, the, the doctors specifically said that they're committed to keep any of the clinic and canyon open. He said they've got a five-year, I don't know if you call it a long-range plan, he said there's no at all, basically, way that he could see that the clinic here would be closed completely. Um, he said there's no scenario that they can see that the clinic would be closed. Um, they also stated that they would consider, and this is something I kind of threw out, I guess when we were discussing today, was trying to maybe have more flexible hours, like instead of saying, okay, we're here two days a week, eight or nine hours a day, maybe they'll be here three days a week. And it would be good if they could add more hours, ultimately that's what we'd still like to see, but maybe they can split that up among three to four days so that, um, maybe they're here noon to five one day, eight to four, eight to 12 another day or whatever, so that people will have the ability to go in there, you know, from one day to the next. They may not be open eight hours, but it would still give coverage on a, on a given day. And I also talked to them, the difficulty with Friday now not having somebody here because now we go Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, like the community does with, with no plan. If we have some hours on Friday, then we only have Saturday, Sunday, Monday, or Monday, I suppose you could also, you know, say that. But three days a week would be a lot better, I'm not saying that's what we prefer life that much, but it would definitely be better than two days a week. Four days a week would be better, but if they could even do three days a week and split it up, it would, it would be better than the two-day scenario. Mike, I don't give any other-
No, I was just, I was glad to get a, as firm as possible from the commitment that they certainly were not planning to reduce hours here.
Yeah.
They would be willing to, uh, work with us on the idea of dividing the same number of hours into more days or a week and possibly, depending on their staffing situation and how much the, um, patient count improves, possibly increasing the hours. And, uh, one thing I'd say there to everybody who's listening, uh, just like I always preach that you have to patronize local business or soon you won't have them, well, I think the same idea applies to this clinic. If, if people don't go there, they will eventually realize that they don't have a reason to be here for us.
It's critically important that this place continues to get patronized. One of the things that they did point out to us was that if the CNAs come here, nurse practitioners come here, they would be from Oatana, so if people have to go there to see them, they would be bearable. Or fairable, they can do their follow-up back here. So, that makes me a little more-
Continuity.
Yeah, that, that we would have that, so people do end up leaving, um, for an initial appointment or a follow-up, whatever it is, they can still come back and subsequently meet back here again with the same person. So, that's, that's, you know, encouraging. But it's, it's a, it's a reality of rural healthcare now, it's, we're not the only community going through this. Blooming Prairie had completely lost, Mayo completely pulled out of there and they ended up going back in there two days a week, but, um, we, I think, I just think that we really need to, I hope we've conveyed to them that we need, you know, a little more coverage than what, you know, we have right now. Um, and he did say they want to partner with the city and the community, they want to work with us, listen to us and they said they're going to, you know, make every attempt to keep in contact with, with me and with the city more. Um, and they said in the next couple of months they're going to continue to, you know, talk to us, whatever that means, dialogue, whatever buzzwords you want to use. But I think the encouragement we today was that they conveyed that they are willing to have more hours and, I mean, I hope that's, I hope that's really what, you know, they're telling us, I mean, that they'll follow through with that or considering it. And that we actually met with the actual operating director of the clinic there and I'd asked for that versus just somebody from their office and he was the guy that did most of the talking today.
Decision maker, not a marker.
Yeah, and I think we saw that, so I hope we kind of conveyed to him that, you know, we, we want more or we need more coverage and we want to do whatever we can as a city to help them do that and with the nursing home. They did say that they are bringing in to the nursing home specialists and doctors, they will bring them in there on certain days to help cover the nursing home when they're closed, so, I mean, they, we, you know, there's little bits and pieces we heard today that are, you know, encouraging.
Yes, I'm hopeful.
Yeah.
And can we do something to let people know that, uh, the clinic is, one, operating and two, willing to see people?
That's what I just did when I made a point of, uh-
Yes, depending on how many people, if you're for people watching.
Well, hopefully on the, you know, the archived copy, uh, on the website, people will be able to see that also.
Mm-hmm. I'm talking about in the newspaper for people who don't go and-
I think Terry is on top of that.
Because I know I was under the impression that, uh, there's no way you can get in there because they've already got their maximum number of patients. And I think there are other people I've talked to who feel, feel the same way, oh, you can't go to the Mayo Clinic because they've already, they're already filled with patients. So, they don't even go in.
One thing that they conveyed to us that right now their patient count was lower than they would like it to be for this, for the number of hours that they're staffing.
Yeah. That I think needs to be conveyed to the general public that, hey, you can go in there, you don't have to go to Oatana or Fairbowl or somewhere else.
Well, this just showed up today, so word of mouth, get it out.
Yeah. And that's what it's going to take, but it's critically important that they continue to get, um, you know, local patients and that's still the biggest driver of-
If, if the patients come in, then they're going to make sure that they've got the medical staff to handle it.
I, I would think so, that's how it's always been in the past and it's driven by the number of, it's driven by demand.
Mm-hmm.
So, getting to be a lengthy meeting. New business, liquor license renewal for Schweiks. This is just a renewal of their existing license.
So moved.
Alan Favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, good.
Excuse me, Mayor, who did the motion?
Right.
And second?
Authorized hiring a full-time police officer. You want to say anything on this, Mark?
Um, the personnel committee met and they reviewed, um, finalists from the last hiring process and discussed whether the process should be reopened and basically came to the, a recommendation of interviewing, uh, three, there's three candidates from the last hiring process, they ultimately interviewed one candidate, Amy Redding, and the personnel committee recommended, recommends that she be approved pending background to fill that position. Um, I think she scored very well, the last time we interviewed, uh, we had a good interview pool last time, I think, you know, and it's different every time you go through it, it's amazing. But we had several candidates that were good and she was one of them, so, um, we did a follow-up and, um, I think that, Chief, I don't know if you have any more?
Um, she did very, very well and the background process has started and everything's looking good so far.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Yep. Second. Alan Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, turn on street light on Whitetail Lane. A resident has requested city turn on streetlight back on, on Whitetail Lane midway between Crumium Road and Scovan Drive, that's in the area where there are no residences at all, red.
Every other light is, um, I talked to Randy today, I think the cost, or he had estimated the cost would be approximately, I think, or about a hundred. I'm sorry, it's got too much going on right now, I think it would have been, was it a hundred fifty dollars a month or, no, a hundred fifty-
A year.
A year, yeah, I think it would be-
Sounds reasonable. Not sure why they want it on, but, uh-
Well, I just feel that, uh, the resident feels that it's, it's not safe or, like, there's not enough light there when people walk through that area.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know what the, um, you know, as far as the rest of that area goes, if that one light is going to make, how much difference it's going to make, it's a sodium, it's not an L-E-D light.
They're older ones.
Yeah.
So, we all need to upgrade it to an LED?
Well, eventually it might be upgraded to an LED.
Eventually, they all will.
Yeah, yeah. But to say that one would be upgraded, I mean, you'd want, we'd want to look, or Kim, you, I think, would look at that whole area, you know, kind of like a build-out or a build-out retrofit of lights, but I think eventually, yeah, the lights are all going to be replaced, are all going to be LEDs.
Well, I don't think it's necessary. When you look at it, I was up there and looked at it too, it was daylight, of course, but, uh, for walking, I can see, but then I can also tell you this here, I think I'd open it up, it is on Spring Street by the school, we have athletic grounds there, there's, uh, apartment buildings, there's homes, condominiums, and there's one street light that's been out there for six or seven years. I asked that same question years ago and it was told because of, um, you know, just cost savings. So, I would say there's people there, there's children that play in that playground all of the time, we're up here at this one that we're talking about, um, literally outside of walking, I can see, I would like it on too if it was, but there's nobody within the area. Somebody starts building in there, I would say that's a difference too.
And I think that's part of the reason they went from that specific area to every other. It was done back when there was a, you know, budget cuts, now it's part of the budget cut in the areas of the city, the, like, streetlights were, every other one was shut off.
Well, I'd still like to see the ones, I don't understand, oh, I turned that on.
There you go.
Been working on it for two years.
Mm-hmm. Well, is anyone going to make a motion on this? I am not. I don't know that. Make a motion, we don't have the light on.
Well, we don't need a motion for that.
Okay. Yeah, soon there won't be that many hours of darkness anyway. Okay, municipal pool repairs, pool and bath house painting and replacing sand and the laterals in the sand filter. Um, clearly are both very much needed, I know the sand filter was a problem at the end of last season. In fact, uh, part of the reason, I believe, for the pool being closed down a few days earlier.
Um, yeah, so there's, you have three estimates in your packet, the first one is for painting, sandblasting and painting the swimming pool, waiting pool and training pool, um, cleaning up debris, painting, et cetera. Um, this is something that is probably overdue, but I will say on the pool painting, we're still trying to get another estimate and maybe two more. So, that one I would, I initially put this in for information at this point, but, so this one I would not say to recommend and act on right now. Now, the next two, one of them would be the, the first one's the bath, the next item is the bathhouse floor resurfacing and that one, I would recommend going with this Min Crete, um, Steve, and I met with these guys and they have a, a very good surface, you know, it's very thick and it's something that basically more or less supposed to be permanent. And, um, I would recommend for going with this quote, um, for that, for that work because this is kind of a whole different type of product than just regular paint and grit in it.
Is that just the bath house or is that the pool?
No, it's just-
Just the bath?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not cheap, but I mean, I think that it's, if we're going to operate that pool, I think we need to, um, you know, do this painting and this sand filter, they just, they have to be re, you know, fixed or painted or whatever.
How often do we do that?
Well, this kind of thing should not be very often and this is a new product and it's got a warranty of, I mean, I don't know what the exact warranty is, but this is something that it, that they told us is supposed to last for years. And I mean, to do a complete blast off and heavy paint should be basically, you know, you would hope you could get by with, um, seven to 10 years. And sometimes, depending on the condition of the concrete, how worn it is, it might be five years, but they went out and looked at it, obviously measured it up, looked at the surface and they felt this would, would last, um, you know, a long time.
You're referring to the bath house?
Yeah, the bath house, yep. But it's, it's, um, Steve would be able to better answer this than I could, especially with the pool.
And you expect to get more bids coming in soon on the pool?
Yeah, Olympics is supposed to give us one on the swimming pool. Um, and then the final item is the sand filter and what we are proposing to do with the sand filter is basically, um, the sand filter, I don't think you're familiar with it, but it's a very large filter and basically what we're proposing to do, instead of replacing the whole filter, lock, stock and barrel is, is changing the sand in the filter, putting in new laterals and gaskets and, uh, sand and pea gravel, which I'm guessing is on the bottom and the top. And then the city would, um, basically clean out the filter, would remove and dispose of the sand and gravel that is in the current filter and then they would basically do the rest. And this is markedly less than, I believe to replace that filter, we were- And this is markedly less than, I believe to replace that filter, we were talking well over ten to twelve thousand dollars, maybe closer to fifteen. And that's something that hasn't been done for, I would bet, twenty years, so I mean, it's, it's not something that's done very often. And this is, uh, definitely needed, I mean, we're probably overdue to replace that, so.
Checking from the condition of that pool at the end of last season, I'd say yes.
So this is, the, the filters, I'll tell you, is definitely something that we need to, and Olympics is the only company that gave us a quote, and Steve was trying to get a quote based on us using the base, the actual filter, um, you know, framework, and us emptying it out and then refilling that, and then putting in new gaskets and seals, and they're the only company that gave us a quote to do that, so.
Now, my next meeting, I'll have more information on that, I think, at that time.
So anyway, what they said as far as, um, was it the sand filter that was?
Ordering the laterals because the equipment is not very new, it's about a three to four week at least for those laterals to be made. So that, that part of it could wait. If you wait until the next meeting, then it's too late.
Okay.
Well. I take it this filter is for the swimming pool water?
Yeah.
In which case, if you're filtering the swimming pool water, do you have to worry about the concentration of chlorine building up in the sand? In which case, then you might have to worry about, uh, how you dispose of it?
Well, last year, we had a, an issue at the end of the season with, um, the water in the deep end, you know, not, the clarity was.
The issue was not affected anymore.
And this is one of the things we were not able to pinpoint, you know, Steve tried some different things to clean it up, and it was kind of a mixed bag. But this was one of the things that was suggested to us was this filter might be part of the cause, and it's because of the sand in there, it's, the end of its useful life.
Yeah.
Now, I can't guarantee that's going to do it, but this, this needs to be done anyway. I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering.
As to your question, the chlorine is volatile, so once it's exposed to the air, it will, chlorine will go eventually.
Okay, so there's no EPA involvement at all with the standing? All right. Because I certainly.
That's why we have to keep adding it to the pool because it evaporates, it goes off into the air over time.
Yes, but as it goes through, the sand could pick up and decodate the.
But again, it would evaporate.
Okay.
Well, in that case, I would make a motion that we go ahead with.